Okay, we're bringing to order the special meeting of town quarter Madera Town Council for Tuesday, January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three at five thirty. Can I get a call to order?
Councilmember Cassisa.
Here.
Councilmember Avasio.
Yeah.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here. Okay, so item number two, the public comment, a public comment can only be made on item three. Is there anyone in the room or online that would like to make public comment?
He did not receive any email and public comments, and we don't have any hands raised from the audience online.
Okay, great. So we'll move on to we'll close that and move to item number three, which is the interviews of planning commission applicants. The town council will interview the following applicants for possible appointment to serve the remainder of an unexpired term on the planning commission ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. First up is Valerie Boshore. And Eli, Vice Mayor will be reading the questions. These questions are for each of the candidates. They will not change. They've been shared previously, and in full disclosure, I do know personally two of the candidates, but it will not affect my ability to make a good decision. So just wanted to disclose that. So Eli, are you ready to begin?
Sure thing.
Valerie, are you ready?
Yes, I am.
All right, here we go.
All right, Valerie, welcome. Thank you for being with us, and we'll start with an opening statement. So you'll have two minutes for that, if you please.
Great, thank you. Well, thank you everyone for having me tonight. My name is Valerie Boshoyer. I am born and raised in Ukraine, moved here about nineteen years ago and to United States specifically, and about eight years ago to Marin County. Five years ago, my husband and I, we bought a house here in Cortez Madera, and since then, we just in love with the town. We have two young children who are six and four. Hands full, then two boys. One of them is attending Neil Cummins kindergarten, and we are big members of the community. We're involved in all of the after-school activities without for our kids and trying to be involved where it could before we were kind of settling in, and now we both seeking for different opportunities how we can serve the town.
Great.
We are.
Thank you very much.
Yes, one minute.
Well done. And so we've got four questions now, and these are the four questions, same questions that each candidate will get. We'll start with question one. What motivated you to apply for the planning commission? What experience and expertise would you bring to the commission? And what do you hope to accomplish by your participation? Please include the following information in your response. One, do you have any experience with design, architecture, or construction? And two, can you read architectural plans, schematics, and drawings? And I think you have a copy of the questions in front of you, because I realize that's a lot to keep in your head.
It's all right. So what has motivated me, as I mentioned earlier, we have been looking for the ways to get involved with the community and the best way that I could serve the community is obviously to share the knowledge that I have, which is I do have an interior architecture background. I did my bachelor's in interior architecture at Broad Institute, and I did sustainability management in Columbia University. Of, and I am working and practicing interior architecture. I've been working in top A and D firms for the past fourteen years. And as a workplace designer, so I do workplace strategy and a workplace design. So to answer whether or not I have the experience of reading the drawings, yes, I do. I'm involved in all of the stages of design, starting from schematic design to design development and construction administration as well. I'm also very hands-on on drafting and doing the drawings and I am also leading a team of about ten people and mentoring at my current position at the company and working on large projects as well that are commercial projects.
Great, thank you. Question two. Have you had an opportunity to work with the planning department on any projects, or do you have an understanding about how the planning department operates? Please include the following information in your response. One, have you attended a commission meeting in the past or reviewed any recent agendas or minutes? And two, are you able to commit to two evening meetings per month that are on the second and fourth Tuesdays, plus any special workshops?
Thank you. So yes, I do have an experience not with Cortez Madera specifically, but with the large school planning department. I do have a couple of the projects on the side that are residential projects. And I have been more on the other side on architecture and design side where I've been applying to the planning commissioner to have the drawings approved. And they were approved successfully. So I've seen how the planning commissioners are operating and to answer the question whether or not I can commit and whether I have been attending before. So previously, my work schedule did not allow me to attend the evening meetings, but now I work the East Coast hours, which relieves half day for me to do all of the extracurricular activities, which I'm very excited about. And yes, I will be able to devote to evenings a month for these meetings.
Great, thank you. Question three. What do you consider to be your strengths and weaknesses? And how would you describe your problem solving style and strategies for dealing with difficult situations or decision making in a group setting?
Thank you. I believe that my strength and weaknesses is sort of blended together. I'm extremely passionate about the architecture and design, which can be strength and also can be weakness, because I'm extremely detail oriented. And I do get carried sometimes in that detail when it gets to it, and I'm very hands-on on things as well. So what I how I'm solving the problems, I'm typically trying to understand what the problem is and trying to find a solution for it and and solve the puzzle within it and try to understand also the desires of the other side of how what motivates them to propose certain decisions or sort of solutions to a particular problem. So try to understand all of the parties and come out with the strategy and solution that benefits all of the sides of the parties in argument.
Great, thank you. And question four, what challenges do you see the planning commission facing in the next several years?
For that one, it definitely can took over than three minutes, but definitely for Cortez Madera specifically, I think it's definitely flood mitigation and retrofitting the households to for the, you know, future climate change disasters that are happening our way. Also, sustainability issues that, you know, need to be resolved a little bit faster and moving a little bit faster than they are. And I believe with design and architecture, there are, you know, it can tip few things and like on the top of the iceberg, but also the policy changes that need to happen and the challenges of planning to growth and to grow into that direction and make correct decisions to make us a little bit more sustainable. But also adding and growth of the multifamily housing that is currently being planned for and talked about a lot. Many things.
Great, thank you. And then we'll have one minute for a closing statement.
Oh, I'm extremely excited. Thank you so much again for having me, and I definitely seeking a lot of ways how to serve the community. I've learned about the position from Charles. And I definitely was extremely excited to read about it and understand how you guys operate, and I would love to share my knowledge and experience and be able to help to grow the Cortez Madera town.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Am I moving to the other side?
Okay, so next up is Robert Lucerini.
Great.
Lucarini.
Thank you. Okay.
So Eli will start.
Okay.
Questions.
Well, welcome, Robert. Good to see you. So we'll just start with two minutes for an opening statement.
Excellent. I'm a resident of Corner Madera since two thousand and twenty-one. I'm a barrier native as as my wife, also my wife is from from Marin, so we're very familiar with the area. I live, I live here in Corner Madera in the Chapman Park area with my my two kids. They're two and four, two, three, yeah, almost three and four. So we have a lot on our hands. As far as organizations, I recently joined the Lions Club. I'm excited to participate at all levels in the club. In earlier in in two thousand and twenty-two, I ran for town council. It was a great experience to to really get to know the town and and its functions. And yes, I really love the the community, what the town has to offer, and you know, I'd love to become to contribute to it at this at this level. Yeah. My, I have a background in engineering. I do not have a architecture background, but I think I can be a great addition to to the board or to the commission, just with strong decision-making, attention to detail and being able to go being able to write expert advice at all levels of 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 the functioning commission. Okay.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. We're not going to read the same four questions that all three candidates will get. Start with question one, three minutes for each of these questions, if you please. Question one, what motivated you to apply for the planning commission? What experience and expertise would you bring to the commission? And what do you hope to accomplish by your participation? Please include the following information in your response. A, do you have any experience with design, architecture, or construction? And B, can you read architectural plans, schematics, and drawings?
Okay. I'll start with my what I hope to accomplish. I see becoming a member of the planning commission as an opportunity, serve the town as residents. I see the commission, this commission, the planning commission is dynamic with a strong sense of purpose, which which kind of do mean to to apply. I was also encouraged by several members of the community that I met during when I ran for for office to to apply. And so that that would that gave me extra that gave me extra motivation to to come here today and present my application. Yeah, and also, yeah, I would love to have a voice in the decision-making around local land use and and help promote, you know, the town's orderly growth that benefits new and existing residents. Also want to try to preserve the care of the the character of the town with regard to experience in architecture, construction. Yeah, I've designed, I've worked with architectures, architects in designing ADUs, kitchen and bathrooms. Also with various projects such as window enlargements. So I have a general knowledge of of kind of structural requirements when when doing these changes, such as little bearing walls, having, you know, sheer walling and different different, you know, high-level considerations. So I can read plans. I could even I can read structural engineering plans as well. And yeah, I believe that answers the second question. The biggest project I've worked, I've helped with was my in-laws. Parking deck in Larkspur, so it was on Wilson Way. It's a very, it was a, it was a very it that provided, you know, a lot of experience with, you know, a large-scale project that had involved a lot of concrete. So yeah, that's, that's all I have to say for two. For question one.
Great, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to question two. Have you had an opportunity to work with the planning department on any projects? Or do you have an understanding about how the planning department operates? Please include the following information in your response. A, have you attended a commission meeting in the past or reviewed any recent agendas or minutes? And B, are you able to commit two evenings to two evening meetings per month, second and fourth Tuesdays, plus any special workshops?
Yes, I never haven't been involved with this commission to date. I have a general idea of what what the commission does. I think the most the most salient function of the the commission is to create and update town rules, ordinances, and records through a public process. For example, you know, rezoning for for new housing. Right, hold public sessions to review information, receive public comments, and provide direction for for design review applications. That's the majority of the the of what I saw in in past meetings. As far as attending meetings, I've attended virtually some of the meetings for the housing, housing development in the town hall project. Yes, I can commit two evenings, two evenings a month, the Tuesdays. I I work as an engineering manager. Again, most of my colleagues are on the East Coast, so actually I do have I can make, that will not be a problem for that time. Oh, I have.
Great, thank you. Question three. What do you consider to be your strengths and weaknesses? And how would you describe your problem solving style and strategies for dealing with difficult situations or decision making in a group setting?
Okay. I'll start with my weaknesses. Probably taking on more non-comfortable handling, but I think being uncomfortable also promotes growth. So I can also consider strength. Some of my strengths, I'm, I think my technical background and management allow me to tackle complex problems, break them down into digestible components. I have attention to detail and critical thinking, and I I enjoy being in the hot seat when facilitating difficult, difficult conversations, tense conversations. Active listening is a big, big trade of vine. And using sound judgment and and especially when dealing with when working with when listening to the public, emphasizing compassion over empathy. I think that leads to better, to better outcomes. Yeah, and also finding common ground on on when 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 approaching disagreements is a good way I use to to kind of diffuse difficult situations. I focus on the core mission of the commission when approaching, when approaching problems, I do not get carried away with my emotions and yep.
Great, thank you. And then question four, what challenges do you see the planning commission facing in the next several years?
Yeah, definitely planning for development and infrastructure for, you know, effective mitigation of a sea level rise and fire risks. That's, that's probably the most important. Rezoning of rezoning for greater density and and larger buildings consistent with the town's draft housing element. Yeah, I think those are the two biggest plans, and also just an ongoing ongoing maintenance of ordinances and and ordinances and and different rules and regulations to to meet the needs of of the of the residents. I don't, I don't come with any agenda. I'm here to to have the best possible outcome, to facilitate the best possible outcomes for that the commission can provide. That's it.
Great, thank you. And then we'll have one minute for a closing statement.
Yeah, it would be an honor to serve this town through the planning commission and contribute to its legacy of thoughtful planning and resourcefulness and a great service to the community.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Robert. So next up will be Dimitri Rogopoulos. I do believe that he's not able to attend in person. He has been detained in Palm Springs, but he can answer the questions via Zoom.
Yes.
He he had a family issue, so he and then he was unable to catch a flight back.
Okay. Rebecca and I have been trying to get a hold of him in the past few minutes, and we haven't heard back. I don't know if he'd like to wait a few minutes.
Yeah, I mean.
Not on the attendee side. And we're trying to.
So it's five forty-nine, and Robert was supposed to go till six, so I do believe we should give him until six. But maybe we could, should we go into recess or just? Okay.
And like.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think in all fairness that that would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we'll take a recess. Do I need to gavel out or? No, okay, all right. So we're going to take a five to ten-minute recess while the final candidate gets online. Thank you. Sorry, guys. Okay, it's now six o'clock. So from six to six fifteen, we have the applicant Dimitri Rogopoulos. So Dimitri, Vice Mayor Beckman has a list of questions that's been asked of all the interviewees. And he'll tell you what the question is and the time allotted for each answer, and you'll see a clock. And please proceed.
Welcome, Dimitri. We'll start with two minutes for an opening statement. This is an opportunity to share a little bit about yourself, your family, your involvement with any other organizations in town or things like that with the council.
Beautiful. So yes, I am. I've been involved in in real estate development and investments since the early two thousands and started basically selling the Greater Palm Springs area to the Bay Area back in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine roughly. And then ended up falling in love with the city myself, moved my family here in two thousand and eighteen. My youngest daughter is in her fifth year of Neil Cummings Elementary School. My my second oldest daughter is in Hall Middle School, seventh grade. I've been operating real estate investments. I've actually handled a couple of development properties in Marin County as well, too. One in Mill Valley, the old Clock Tower Fidelity National Title, and we're working on a currently working on a residential property that's off of Redwood Avenue. So I've I've had the pleasure of working with with the city on both projects. And I enjoy it. Honestly, I love working with people. I'm a great team player. I I know how to establish rapport pretty quickly and and basically put in the effort. And I know how to delegate responsibilities as well, too. So I've had the opportunity to be on city council meetings handful of times as well. So I'm looking forward to the potential of working with with everyone involved.
Great, thank you. We're going to move on now to four questions. These are the same questions that all three candidates have received. We'll do three minutes apiece. Question one, what motivated you to apply for the planning commission? What experience and expertise would you bring to the commission? And what do you hope to accomplish by your participation? Dimitri, do you have a copy of the questions handy by any chance? I'm guessing you don't. These are a little long.
I I did on my laptop. And yeah, I I'm so sorry. This is not the way I wanted to introduce myself to the panel. I lost my father on the twenty ninth, so I'm in Palm Springs right now, just basically handling, you know, my my parents' home and move my mother to Cortez Madera in fact as well. So the last two months has just been an unexpected, unfortunate surprise for my family. So but I always prepared and I, yeah.
Sorry about that. I know how life can throw these things at you. So this this question one is just about generally your your kind of experience and professional background. And then we we're going to ask that you include in your response any experience you have with architecture, design, or construction, and whether or not you can read architectural plans and schematics.
Absolutely. And yes, I can. I mean, we were currently working on two different developments outside of Marin County. One is in we are working on a one in Belize that in Placentia. Hundred and fifty-one homes that I was actually the forgive me. I was referred this developer. And we've been handling all the sales on the property, and I flew into Placentia, and I read all the architectural designs, and I gave my input on what we should do to actually bring in more, you know, of a more of an international exposure. Prior to that, we did a development in Coachella in the Greater Palm Springs area. You know, we do a lot of developments out here. In fact, seven homes in the city of Coachella itself, the where we helped a developer, you know, from basically the beginning all the way to the very end, and I had to bring in some of my own contractors, several of them, because if you know the process, you know that some, you know, you have to fine tune it as you go along. So a lot of contractors don't, you know, don't don't show up all the way to the very end. So I have a lot of connections both in Palm Springs and in Bay Area as well, too, to kind of, you know, bring on other potential architects and contractors to the table if 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 need be. We're going to be working on another project in Santa Rosa. We're just actually in a process of acquiring the land, and then we're going to be working on the, you know, construction of another seven to nine homes there as well, too. So working with the city and the utility, and I've done a number of like neighborhood outreaches. In fact, you know, when we're, we have to get certain certain items processed, and we have to like connect with the whole city. I've done a number of, you know, neighborhood outreaches as well, too.
Great, thank you. Move on to question two. Have you had an opportunity to work with Cortez Madera's planning department on any projects, or do you have an understanding about how our planning department operates? Please touch in your response on whether you've attended a planning commission meeting in the past or reviewed any recent agendas or minutes, and whether you can commit to two evening meetings per month, plus any special workshops?
Absolutely. We're, like I said, we currently are working on one on Redwood Avenue. It was an existing home, mid-century modern existing home that we had to take down. I apologize about that. We had to we had to basically tear down an existing home that was all dilapidated. There was a seventy-foot redwood tree in the back of it as well that we had to bring an arborist to give his input. Actually, was, you know, destructive only to that existing home, but to the surrounding homes. And it was actually a tree that was given as a gift by the neighbor. So it wasn't like, you know, nature. So that house got torn down, and we brought in a developer that's going to be constructing a new home, and I had to once again do a whole neighborhood outreach on that as well, too, and go and connect with several different, you know, neighbors and try to get, you know, listen to their, you know, gain their support, listen to their opposition in efforts to try to gain the support. And we did several several meetings and trying to, you know, gain the support from from the neighbors as well. So there was a, you know, good half a dozen of those before we actually succeeded. And the house was three one seven, you might be familiar with the three one seven Redwood Avenue. It was torn down, and now we're just waiting for the rain to stop so we can proceed with the construction of it. And we also did the outside of Cortez Madera in Mill Valley, the the old Fidelity National Title. I represented the buyer and the seller on that property, and the buyers are a veterinary clinic, and we had to get a conditional use permit, which took some time. And then now they're gonna bring in, you know, tie in like an additional, I think, a thousand, twelve hundred square feet, I believe, roughly, to to bring in a surgical center on that property as well, too. So, you know, attending the city council meetings and trying to gain support where it's needed and, you know, listen to the opposition and do it in a way where people feel like prioritized. It's something I'm fond fond of. In fact, I love working with people.
Great, thank you. Question three, what do you consider to be your strengths and weaknesses? And how would you describe your problem solving style and strategies for dealing with difficult situations or decision-making group setting?
Well, I'm sorry. Can you can you repeat the question?
Sure thing. What do you consider to be your strengths and weaknesses? And how would you describe your problem solving style and strategies for dealing with difficult situations or decision-making in a group setting?
Impeccable communication, you know, I think just listening before giving your input is imperative, you know, establishing rapport with whatever whatever people that are involved in the in the situation in efforts to try to find. Um, in efforts to try to find diplomatic resolutions, you know, just great communication is something that, uh, is essential. Uh, in any, anything that you do, um. I, uh, I, 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 I'm a great team player. I can help to solve problems. I mean, my, my motto is there is never any problems, there's only solutions, and I like to give. You know, I, I like to figure out, you know, options for whatever the problem is, you know, if, if we do, one does arise, here's. Here's your options to the, to the problem, you know, we, we can figure it out and. These, you know, this is, these are your options to get it done.
Great, thank you. And then our last question here is what challenges do you see the planning commission facing in the next several years?
Um, well, I would have said the water, but, uh, that's apparently not a, not a primal, but I think. You know, trying to figure out ways to, um. Uh. To manage the water, uh, situation, you know, fortunately, we, we've had plenty of it in the. Last few weeks, but it's gonna be a continual problem, so trying to figure out a way to manage that, I, I believe something that. Is, um, imperative. Um. The, the off-ramps, you know, on the free, on the, on the roads, the. I, I think even like the sewer situation, the sewer lines with the. ADUs that are being, you know, tapped into the city and all that, trying to, trying to figure out like how we're gonna. Um. How we're gonna be able to manage, uh, the additional, um. Like sewer laterals that you tapped into the, to the main line and how that can, you know. We, we can continue that without it becoming a problem. Um, landslides, I mean, the, the rain is something that i- is gonna continue. Um, so trying to figure out ways where there, you know, it's not causing. Chaos and confusion for people that are on the streets, I think is something that needs to be, uh, prioritized. Maybe more multi-unit properties, mixed use, commercial on the first level, residential up.
Great, thank you. And then we'll have one minute for a closing statement if you'd like.
Um, yeah, I'm just, I honestly, I'm just looking forward to the, to the potential of working with everybody and I. Once again, I, I want to apologize for looking like I'm not prepared for this situation. Once again, the, the, the last three weeks have just been, um. Uh, you know, an unfortunate experience for my family. We've been trying to match, um, but normally, um, I'm like so on with, uh. With my presentation and I, I'm just looking forward to the potential, uh, of working with everybody and just really showing. What I can bring to the table, um, working together with everyone would be something that, um, I, I'd be. Grateful for the opportunity to do. I love the city of Corder Madera. When the opportunity to move to, uh, the Bay Area presented itself, I, I knew from the beginning that I wanted to be in Marin County because. The schools drive real estate, you know, um, and Marin County has some of the best schools, I believe, in the nation. Corder Madera itself, in fact, I think we, in fact, we have a national distinguished school, Hall Middle.
Unfortunately, your closing time is up, so.
Okay.
Short and fairness to everyone.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Dimitri. Okay, so, uh, that is the conclusion of item number three, the interviews of the planning commission, so I'll open up. Uh, item number four, which is the deliberation, an appointment of one applicant to fill the remainder of a two-year term on the Corder Madera Planning Commission. Yes, ma'am. Um, sure, so, uh, uh, we can open it up to public comment before we begin deliberation, so if there's anyone, um. That would like to speak about the interview, uh, that happened in item three, uh, the opportunity presents itself, uh, anyone in the room or on Zoom?
You don't have any email public comment or any hands raised from attendees? And it doesn't look like anyone in the room, um, would like to provide public comment.
All right, great, um, so, uh, we'll bring it back to the, uh, council.
And then, um, Mayor Lee, it looks like Rebecca. Thank you, Mary. I, I didn't put this in the, um, agenda packet, but Adam and I were discussing, um, when you do. Um, after you deliberate and potentially consider a motion to make an appointment to the commission, the. Effective start date of that appointment, we believe should be February twenty-eighth. Which is, there's, there's a meeting that evening, um, there's outstanding business that the commission needs to wrap up with its current, um, body before. Um, onboarding the new member and whoever the new member is would be encouraged to attend the meetings leading up to that date to get up to speed on. The activities and there would be some onboarding that needs to take place and getting a new member up to speed, so, um. Whenever you do make that motion to make a potential appointment, just make sure that it's effective, uh, February twenty-eighth.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
So, um, do we just wanna go round robin and speak to the candidates and the interviews?
You're the mayor.
I'd like, I, I'd like to hear everyone's thoughts about. Um, I, I think it would be important to identify who, you know, who, who, who you think that the top candidate is and kind of. Explain why and then we'll, we'll go through and see, you know, we can find a motion. It, it's just in all transparency, you know, and, and I think I, I would like, this isn't just speaking to the, ultimately, this is a discussion, so if any of the other council. Feel like they wanna speak to items brought up. I, I would encourage it. Yeah.
Are you looking for a volunteer of someone to go first?
I, I, or, or it was, uh, I mean, I usually start with Rosa, so I, I like just as a matter of.
And Councilmember Thomas, yeah, if you could turn on your mic.
Well, first I wanna say that, once again, um, the town of Corder Madera has an embarrassment of riches. Of wonderful people who want to serve, um, you know, we have a great town staff. Um, we had a lot of people come out for the last election and quite honestly. It's, it's difficult, um, to choose a favorite. I'll just say that. You know, I look at what different people bring and I think Dimitri, um, brings. Um, a, a view that I think could be helpful in large, um. Uh, developments, um, that he's got that experience and background and that's, that's really amazing and maybe something that's in our. Near future. Um, I think Robert has, uh, you know, to the ground, to the. Neighbors' relationships that I think are really crucial. And I think Valerie has great, um, a great background in design. A great background in everything from top to bottom. She's a Pratt graduate, which is where one of my daughters graduated from. So I know she's got a, a stellar background, so I'm not, I'm sure I'm not being very much help.
In fact, I think that's an important thing for sharing and we can.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Want me to go next?
Pat, please.
So I agree that, um, we're really lucky to have.
Councilmember of Ozio.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Uh, I agree with Rosa that we have an embarrassment of riches and we're lucky to have three such excellent candidates. Um, Robert, I'm glad you joined the Lions and I'm hoping that we'll spend a lot of time together. Um, Dimitri, I'm super impressed. I, I wasn't aware of, uh, all of your background and I think, um. Your work, uh, could be really important and helpful in, in things regarding planning in the town. But for me, the tiebreaker is Valerie because of her both design and sustainability studies. Um, her educational background, I think, is exemplary for what we're looking for. Um, definitely the sustainability aspects with all of the building projects that we're going to be getting into are going to be super important and. The fact that she has not just Pratt but Columbia, which is also our town manager's, uh, alma mater and he's. His education seems really top-notch, um, so the sustainability aspect and work on climate, I think, is the tiebreaker here and also. Just her professionalism and her understanding of what her role would be in design review. Um, and also looking at new mixed-use opportunities. A lot of our ho- housing zoning has mixed-use possibilities and I think we need. Creative thinkers, um, to bring all kinds of things to the party i- in that way as well, so my vote would be for Valerie.
Okay.
You know me, I cut to the chase sometimes. I think everybody did a great job and I think everybody. And look up Dimitri also. Everybody brings something a little bit different to the table, um, which I think all adds to the planning commission, cuz I think there needs to be. Variances within the planning commission itself, and that's what upgrades everything, um. I'm also leaning towards Valerie. I think, again, I agree with Pat on the sustainability, the climate change, and I think your background. Um, I just think that it would be a good fit, uh, for the planning commission. So again, I don't mix words a lot of times, but again, I think everybody did a great job.
Definitely agree, these are all strong candidates. Um, the planning commission is a, a very technical role, um, so I think, you know, definitely would prize a candidate. Who's comfortable with all types and scales of projects, um, and, and, uh, you know, is, is familiar with the planning process. Um, you know, I think also it's important to have somebody who's got, uh, you know, a good connection of the community and has familiarity, um, with the Corder Madera Planning Department. You know, specifically or, or just planning departments, uh, in general, I think that's one of the most important, uh, things you can bring to this, uh, role, so I think, you know, on balance. I'd be thrilled to have any of these three candidates, uh, uh, on our, on our planning commission. I think I feel that Valerie is probably the best fit, um, of the three candidates at this time.
Okay. All right, um. So, uh, yeah, I also feel very strongly that we, uh. I love when people come to the table, whatever their backgrounds, to just volunteer and I've seen it throughout. My time, uh, both myself coming once over and over again until the opportunity, uh, presents itself and others. That have also done it and we always benefit from that drive and we always seek to try to find good ways for everyone to participate in town. Um, business, so, um, that being said, uh, based on, um. Uh, feedback that I've gotten from other people in the profession, uh, that I highly value, um. And then also, uh, feedback from some of the residents, um, in the past about, uh, representation on the, on the planning commission. I can also, uh, back Valerie at this point, um, you know, uh, so. Uh, 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 that's, that's probably, I think, what would be best and it is a short term, so ultimately, you know. Um, it's a, it's a testing to see if it works out from a scheduling and, and everything else, so. You know, I would encourage all the other candidates to continue as new opportunities arise to, um, keep participating and, and trying, but. I need a motion to basically confer what, uh, I think the council would like.
I would like to move that we welcome Valerie.
What's Valerie's last name?
Sure.
I would like to move that we invite Valerie to join the planning commission for the next two years.
I'll second it.
To starting the, starting February twenty-eighth. I think that's a leap here.
Okay, now here a second.
One second.
So can we get a, a vote?
Yeah. Yes.
Yes.
My own mic isn't on. Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Councilmember of Ozio.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
And Mayor Lee.
Yes, all right, uh.
Thank you, the motion passes.
Mary, can I just make a plug for, um, the fact that our annual recruitment for all town boards, commissions and committees will open. Probably early March. We don't have a date set yet, but I would love to, um, have Robert and Dimitri. Uh, put in applications or keep their current applications on file to be considered, uh, for the full. Terms that we will be recruiting for, for this commission as well as our, all of our other boards and commissions.
Excellent, uh, noted, good, so, uh, talk to, talk to Becca, um. So with that, uh, I think I will move to item number five, which is adjournment of the special meeting.